Before we just move on to the five pine press drive, the only thing I want to bring up is, I'm assuming they would collect signatures on the RSA language?
Yes.
On the petition? So that will go to the town if the petition has enough signatures. And if it gets approved, then it will do exactly what you're concerned about.
But they're looking for another.
I'm suggesting that they get a citizen warrant article in case, if our lawyer says you can't protect those funds, and then they don't have a motive three to put on as a selectman's warrant article, I'm suggesting that if they want this to be addressed at town meeting, that they bring it themselves.
Yeah, but they'll have to have language for people to sign onto.
Right, and there's language in the, the language is in the person. We can't add any other language to it.
If they do a citizen warrant article, it's going to say the language.
I think what the statute says, you can't add to it.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I understand that.
Yeah?
But it's just in case there isn't another one.
No, no, yeah, it's fine, I just.
So you could end up with that scenario even if the board did not wish that.
All right, Elena Colby, Five Fields, Stone Drive. So, so we're supposed to have an answer from Attorney Mayor by the seven, hopefully?
Yeah.
So is Sandy supposed to just move ahead with the citizens' petition? Is that?
Yeah, I'll talk to Bob in a little.
Okay, just making sure I understand.
Heidi, it seems like, you know, given that Sandy's willing to have a reasonable protection over the funds, and Attorney Marshall's already reviewed the statute, my guess is it's just a matter of what that looks like? And then the citizen petition's not going to be necessary? I just don't want to get to the seventh and have the lawyer say, "Oh, no, you can't, like he told us tonight", and then say, "I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do."
That's why I'm hopeful we get a response from Eric this week, so.
Okay.
And I think the RFPs in the affirmative, it would be okay with David, with Sandy, so she's not running around?
Yeah. Yeah, so she doesn't have to go jump through a bunch of hoops. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the call, folks.
Ted, the common goal is going to move this more, I'll try to move you up.
Number of three, cutting and treating of safety center.
Yes, I was able to get the plan that I was talking about that talks about the note one and the buffer. I think that was all board had wanted was to take a look at this, or see that the note.
Yeah, we wanted to see what the plan.
Yeah.
While they're looking at that, I make a motion to accept the grant funds for mill coal treatment on thirty pond. This is something we've done every year in here now.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Oh, hang on a minute, Tonya.
Can I get an authorization for David to sign?
And for David to sign.
Thank you.
Amendment.
I'll fit.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, I know why Ted's here, why aren't you here?
Chris was here.
Huh? Oh, I thought it was something on the agenda. Oh, all right, just listen. I'm sorry, I just.
Because this is the place to be.
Sandy, how is the mill coal open?
Well, actually, they didn't find any in the end of last year.
So first year, it was ineffective, second year, you work?
Well, it's, it's been a kind of a macking forward because we had treated it. What happened is we had treated it with something that every place else tends to be a one-time treatment, and it wasn't a one-time treatment, so then.
What's it say, Mike?
It says trees beyond the buffer area is permanent, cut, cutting of trees.
No further tree clearing beyond what is shown on these plans will be permitted.
Within the buffer?
No, beyond that, right?
Just, it's, there's two areas that say see note one.
Okay.
Okay.
So note one.
See note one.
That's the area we're talking about, right?
See note one.
Yeah, now read the note, it says nothing beyond that, right?
No further tree clearing beyond what is shown on these plans will be permitted.
So what happens when we want to put the community center in that spot?
Do a planning board review?
Whole another planning board approval process.
And that says, that Jason Building says we can't.
Well, you'd have to do the AOT again.
You, you go back in, they override.
That's based on for the alteration, right? Alteration tree permanently.
So Angela, the way you're reading it is you, we cannot take those trees down according to that plan?
I'm just reading what it says here, no future tree clearing.
Why did you, I didn't return that verse.
I'm just reading what it says.
It shows note one, and it's showing a buffer line, right? No, it's a contour line. They're showing that whole wooded area, not, yeah, they're showing both wooded areas, and they're saying, no further clearing.
So you can't.
So you can't. You'd have to go back through a whole buffer. Could never work with that. Number four, areas commissioned space in the whole municipal.
Wait, wait, wait. I just, we had a nice letter that came from Eric, it was about the tree cutting, and I really liked his recommendation that was to unify the entrance of Bo safety center and enhance visitor rights to the front of the facility on the opposite side. So like putting up signs and really making sure that people knew where the Bo safety center is, because I understand that the concern here is that if you can't see the Bo safety center.
There's a little sign that says police.
But maybe there is an opportunity to create something that really gets people's attention without cutting the trees. And then Eric's suggestion was to actually plant additional trees in the tree line to fill in some of the gaps, so that you didn't have some sparse looking areas. And, you know, it would just help really unify that particular area. So I just wanted to share that because I think those are the recommendations.
Number four, areas commissioned.
You mean?
Yes. Okay, yes, sorry.
May I speak on the subject of cutting trees just a second?
Oh, absolutely, sir, come right up.
May I just look at the map?
Sure.
The ARPA.
Do you have things to say?
No, I'd like to speak.
You were going to find out of the ARPA.
Go ahead. Say your name for the record, though.
My name's Ted Bardwell, living in fourteen Bog Bog Grove. I'm the initial person who mentioned this fact that we could not see the new safety building from down on Bo Center Road, Locking Hill Road, and so forth. And there's only a very small clump, three or four clumps of trees there. Pine trees particularly, if they were removed, that you could see the building. And also, it might improve the sledding hill. I'm not trying to be, it's just that we've got a building here, we spent, somebody clarified me, four and a half million dollars on. I've got forty cents involved in it, and I'd just like to see my forty cents seen by the public. On the subject of improving the approach to the building, I'd like to see the area as you're coming from. Locking Hill Road up to the building, on the left-hand side, near that book thingy, there's a depression about a foot or so for catch basin. I almost sprained an ankle in that. I'd like to see that whole area rated off, so it's at least a firm and slope in there, so that you don't have to trip over this depression. And also, coming all the way up to the driveway that goes into the building, there's a slope that goes away from the edge of pavement. Right now, there's a gap in there about a foot or so, it's probably two or three inches in depth, and somebody coming down that Knox Road with a bicycle would very easily get into that and go.
Ted, when you brought that up, I did talk to Tim Sweeney about that, and I think he was going on vacation, but let me follow up with him and then follow up with you. I did talk to him about it.
Last item, we got a sign up there that is not illuminated at night, so that you're coming up the hills, Knox Road, and turning, trying to find the building. There's a beautiful sign, but there's no lights on it at night. Solar powered light out there would be perfect. I guess that's all I have to address, but I guess we can't take the trees down to see the building, but.
I'll ask you, Ted, I think that the building's beautiful, and it would be cool to see some of it, but we made certain promises when we got the permission. I suspect at some point, as a resident, we're going to see further town planning in that area, maybe we address that. And David and I would make a request that we have Tim address these safety issues on the walkway of the eight lane, at least if we need funds. Gentlemen, you can look, I'll make it, but I think you heard. I sent you somebody to hurt, where Ted told him to stay.
Yeah, right. David, those depressions are filled with stone, are those part of the drainage system associated with that? When I talk to someone, we might not be able to manage that.
Well, you mean the stone, you see some of his shoulder?
Yeah, or dip it down.
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no trench from the driveway going down along Knox Road down to that catch basin. It's got, there's a slope in there now, right from the edge of pavement, that goes up with a bunch of stone. And it's a trench right now that's been eaten away by the rains and stuff like that. You know, inch or two or three deep, you come down there in a bicycle, and you're going to.
Yeah, he's talking about the riprap up further by the entrance?
Yeah.
Down below is, there's a big gully.
We know where the, I know where.
It was to sit until somebody points on you, go like, oh, yeah. Uh, so, anyways.
Could the snow plow get in there now and remove some of that snow? I feel like kids can get in there, but they're on the hills, and parents take their kids up the hill and so forth. I mean, it's a good place for the kids to go and sled and so forth. And I'd just like to see that improved a bit more and so forth.
Push back the snow right now, Ted, you're talking about?
Take it away.
Oh, take it away.
You've got, you've got a drift in there where the plows have put it up, and you can't park your car there and walk over into the, you can't even get to the gazebo.
Yeah, I know Tim was slammed, so his crew worked twenty-four hours.
That, that's, that's a given, it's going to happen.
He turned into the snow in three days.
More on the way.
I measured, I measured fourteen inches at my house.
Is that yesterday or Monday, Friday? What'd you get Friday?
That was, that was a stick in the, right on my back door on the deck yesterday afternoon at about five o'clock.
And what'd you get last Friday?
I have no idea. Probably six inches to five inches.
All right, number four, heritage commission space in the whole municipal building, so what do you, what do you mean, a motion over there?
I don't think so, I don't, no, I.
We just want to express interest.
I thought we already determined that's what they're going with.
Yeah, well, let's get it done, so.
Who's our rep on heritage commission? How do you make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the heritage commission. Move into the downstairs.
Yes.
I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, right. They take community.
I think, I think the motion should encourage them to start the planning. Obviously, they can't, you know, we're in the middle of construction.
Yes.
We've got the support of the board selection, encourage them to start the planning for the future of the planned space as their home.
Officially, yes, officially offering the space.
Will you second that, right, being in.
Well, this is a friendly amendment, I'd like to put a deadline to get him in there by, say, June first.
Of two thousand seventy-nine.
Because you're taking, barring all this updating.
Condition upon the update.
Yeah, I mean, the bill's just out there.
So I would second that motion.
So the.
Stop playing.
No, I just said the heritage commission just wanted to make sure there was a vote on record, and that there wasn't.
No, all good, we've been trying to do this for years since finally coming together, so.
Yeah, I assured them that I was very certain the word was.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let me make a motion to turn that place into a point-up laundry?
Okay, so on a serious note, I want to make a motion that we do.
How is it, Joe?
Make an amendment to the town report. Apparently, last year, we missed a deceased resident, Joe Collins. So if I could make a motion that we amend the 2023 town report to include.
Twenty-two town report.
That's not what this says.
Well, because it's always for this, if we're not doing the annual report for 2023, because we're still in 2020, the annual report's going to be for 2022.
Just read what was on here. So 2022, town report.
Any discussion? Tonya, I'd like to extend our apologies to the family on behalf of the board. All in favor? Aye. Close, not a fast end. Number nine, acceptance of grant.
We already did that.
About the request for appropriations, security system evaluation and service agreement, David?
Yes, the, the two chiefs and Chris have been working on trying to figure out the security system, so I finally pulled this all together and just said, "Look, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan, find out what's going wrong. We seem to be paying a lot of money to replace individual door mechanisms", and they're all tied in together. Well, it turns out that the group met with a gentleman from Howard Systems, in fact, I think his name is Mr. Howard, but, who quickly evaluated, took a quick look around and said, "Has your software been updated? Has, you know, has anyone maintained and checked the batteries?" Well, this is our current company, we're paying them to do all this, and they haven't been. And basically, what they've been doing is telling us, "Oh, you need to replace the cameras, and you need to..." Well, it turns out the cameras that they were then telling us we had to replace, that we, the three knew that they sold us, lo and behold, went in and, jeez, miraculously it all worked, because they updated some of the software, so. And all that was incumbent on the maintenance company that we have been using. So they spoke with this gentleman, and they'd like to propose that they, an assessment be done of the system, and then that we bring on this new company for an eighteen-month service agreement. It sounds like they'll be able to quickly do a lot of things that, we got to the point where we just thought that the battery-operated or whatever wireless door opener, it's just, they're junk, they're junk. That's all I wanted to get away from, they're not, it's just our company had never taken care of it. So, you know, this is a long run will save us a good amount of funds. Then we're also going to, you know, on top of that, have discussions with our, the company that we were using, or will soon to have been using.
I appreciate that there are some issues in that building, and I think we've been fixing it. We've given a lot of money for the last couple of years, on saving cameras and networks. A proposal that we spend fifteen hundred dollars a month to keep an eye on our system? That's a, that's a new dependent.
Aren't we, don't we have, don't we pay someone now to maintain these systems?
Yeah.
And the issue is that the current person or the current company that is maintaining these systems is not doing everything that they should be doing. So my understanding includes, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would be dropping that service from that thing?
Correct.
And picking up this one in its place, so it wouldn't necessarily be.
Well, that's the case, in that case, we don't not need to offer us twenty-three thousand dollars because we're just replacing the budget line item. If they, if you need a vote from us to allow them to change vendors.
Yeah, all right, now let me check and see what we.
The current agreement, the current company, I think it's about five thousand dollars a year. The issue is, we have a problem, they come, they look at it, they said, "You have to replace a piece of equipment, you have to replace these cameras, you have to replace that, you have to replace this." And then, so when Chris was talking to this Howard company, he showed them, and within a short period of time, the guy from Howard said, "Oh, you just need a firmware upgrade to these three cameras that went out all at once, that the current vendor said, 'Oh, they died', three cameras all at once on one section of the building." And we have this problem.
Sounds like this guy knows what he's doing.
Right.
Fifteen hundred dollar a month service agreement? Like, we signed this guy's for the rest of that, or I suppose he pays fifteen dollars a month for some company that decided to have a load of firmware updates. This is not even capital profit. I think we need a heck of a lot more information and.
I'd like to see more information, more than me. We ought to drag our current provider in and tell them how much money they're going to pay us back for the services they weren't providing that they were supposed to provide under the contract, and then get more information on the new guy, and see if he's providing the same service we thought the other guy was providing, or if there's a lot more, is there some maintenance parts included in that? What's included?
Ted, what, and what can we take out of the budget that we're, that we're sitting there?
This is the contract.
Three new cameras that we were going to have to buy.
Is that in the budget?
No.
We, because I know we did, I think the budget last year to do it.
When's the current contract that's fired yet?
I believe they're on a calendar year.
So it just got renewed?
We have not paid for this year yet.
Sounds like they.
I need to do a little more digging.
All right.
I get the direction.
So what was the first stance we already did? Energy Committee.
Well, we, we kind of talked about that earlier, Chris wasn't in the room, but the way this was worded in the last meeting, a little concerning that, I want to be sure that the Energy Committee knows that they need to come to David with any RFP proposals that go out there, or they're accepting. And Chris, I'm not sure why you made this motion, you even, I think stated, because I watched the video, that you're not sure why you have to even make the motion, but. We have given them the authority to do RFPs, but it seemed like they were given the authority to do everything.
I think they're, they have authority to send out a, "Hey, are you in renewable energy space, and do you have ideas about what the town vote should do?" If you, one guy, they say, "I want to put solar panels on the dome", one guy, they say, "We want to help you change your life".
Right, but as far as, as far as moving forward with any of those RFPs, it goes through David?
Goes to Ross.
Ross and David, yeah, yeah, no.
They don't have the authority to.
Okay, I just, when you made that motion that said, "I'm not sure I need to make this motion", I was like, okay, that just confused it for me.
Basically, it was like, you know, we give them authority to discuss with people who are experts about what they would do if they could do so.
Okay, great, I just, just wanted to clarify with that.
I think they have a, they have a.
Right, no more.
Yes.
Those are the ones you're adding, so.
I think they have a meeting scheduled to talk to the community about energy efficiency coming up.
It's tonight.
Oh, it's the same night as last one.
So what she said today was for tonight?
Yeah, and they were putting that on, that was somebody else was putting that on, and it was like, we could.
I wonder why it's like climate action now?
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't something that we were putting on, it was something we had to share.
This was about, it was like two months ago, she was all this.
No, this is a different one.
Yeah, this is.
She's on top of all of the different things that are going on.
One of those two months ago, Bruce, was the done by the energy efficiency program that was just there.
No, I bet she talked about ones in the future, I thought she brought that one up.
Ultimately, I think this is the one that I sat into the FPAC and conquered, that they talked about this, they had a long presentation, and I got the guy's contact information and gave it to her to look into. I think that's the one.
Carrot wires, recovery.
Yes, no, nothing.
Did you buy out, generated, David?
Yes, we are doing that, is, I saw a picture on the trailer, so we'll see here.
So I understand the generator blew up the security fence at the safety building?
The security system?
Uh, well, I don't think the security fence was ever happening, but the generator did cost sixty thousand bucks or so.
Fifty-three.
And not mistaken, there were no votes on that, no vote in the safety fence.
Outstanding project, David?
Nothing.
That's the same as last?
Yes, it is.
And property ownership clarification, Bruce, we love, what did that?
That was the, we'd asked Kevin McCann, that sent a letter to the town with some information and documents on, you know, what his thoughts are, "Here's what the status of that road is in classified", so I got that before I bring it to the board, I sent it to the town council to take a look, and he did, he has a response, but the board has not been able to look at it or discuss it yet, so I don't know.
So can we calendar that for the next meeting? And you can disseminate that, is that something you had today or something?
Yes.
And you disseminate that to the, to the members?
Okay.
And that's a confidential document until, till we know the other one.
Can we do the four folks that have now sat for two meetings, ready for this, I'd like to favor, maybe schedule this at the beginning?
Yes, put that as a number one.
Yeah, that was odd, right, I think it's time.
All right, bottom line, enjoy.
I just want to take a second to acknowledge the different volunteers that come together on the Budget Committee, everybody that works on the budget, it's a daunting task, you know, brings together volunteers on the town side and the school side, and, you know, it's got to be a challenge. I think we all understand it's a challenge to try to work out a budget that works for our community, and so I want to thank all of those volunteers who are not getting paid, but to deal with stressful situations and cutting things, and it's a lot to deal with. And I really appreciate all the work that they put into both the town side and the school side and everyone.
Matt?
So Carrie Mackin and the community belt work, and I are back to our visits, business visits in town. We had a really great visit with Pike Sevens down at Coastal. You know, they talked a lot about his expansion, I told them I'm not the planning board rep, so, I probably should have had you along, Mike, but, great to see that building, what they're doing, they're growing. It was a really, really good visit, met his dad too, so it was a really, really positive visit. I'm really sorry, as Chris has always said, and I agree with him, I miss the posting cane, hated doing that, but I ended up in the hospital in the morgue the following day, so it was a good idea, I didn't go. So thanks for sharing the pictures, kind of excited about seeing that, and it actually was right in the paper, right on Monday, so that was pretty cool. And thank you, Chris, Mike, and Bruce for helping out with the donations and the cookies, appreciate that.
Budget, it's one, it's type two fund. It's a type one fund is, we all know what that is, it's doing something when you're doing it. Type two fund is something when you're doing it that's miserable, you're trashing it through hundreds and hundreds of lines, and when it's over, you think back, like, "I enjoyed that with my team", and so I know I'm going to get there, I'm going to get to the point where I look back and think it's type two. We've made some good progress, and I think the town budget is a product of that.
It's not our best one yet, right?
It's the best town budget, but let's be honest, it's a negative number because we, over the last two years, we paid for our OREX center for nine dollars. And so we had five hundred thousand dollars expenditure, two years ago, five hundred thousand dollars expenditure in this budget. And so we're negative a hundred and something thousand because we don't have that, but it's still year over year, and, you know, over the time that we've all been selectmen, we've kept that budget flat, and that's hard, and our town reps have done it. This has been a tough set, two sets of storms for Tim, and I want to say thank you to Tim and his team. If you've seen him, let him know, I, it's hard to have no snow, and then for the first time you use your trucks, we need them for basically thirty hours. I know they have at least one truck go down, and I know, and when you have a storm this long, you get to the point where people have to get some rest. And though, it isn't the best performance we ever had on roads, it was still better than everybody else's. And I think cross started the line this morning, I was reminded, those are the best roads. A boss was taking that, is awesome. My favorite part is when we told him why we were there, he was surprised at how old he was. "Me?!" So, Jess, I can't wait to. So, Jess, I can't wait to update that photo there.
Very movie.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And then he thought it was his birthday, he kept thinking it was his birthday.
And he says, it's not my birthday.
He knew it was in June, he goes, we're celebrating early.
And then he said, told his oldest guy in town, he said, how old am I anyway, eighty-four? Just awesome.
He was what, a hundred Jew? No, it's ninety-eight, it'd be ninety-nine. He was born in nineteen twenty-four, the year the Bruins.
That's right.
That's all I have, Bruce. Mike?
I have to, um, cancel those comments about all the volunteers. We couldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without volunteers. I enjoyed the Ross game, his presentation, his character. And, uh, I did visit Tim personally this morning and thanked him, thanked him and his crew for the, uh, efforts they did during the stormstorm. He said, did say that they were tired, they went out four hours straight. Yeah, so, yeah, and they came back and did the cleanup today. So they were still working out, cleaning up today.
That's it? I just wanted to apologize to the board for missing the last meeting, had some medical issues, I appreciate, thank you guys for covering everything while I was gone. Um, and I do want to, um, say thank you to highway department and police department dealing with the last storm because, uh, it was a double whammy, um, and they get another one, I believe, tomorrow or night. So they do an exceptional job, I don't think that, that's the character of workers we have, those departments, so. I get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.